Be controlled by technology. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, March 11th. This is a regular meeting of Grimes County Commissioners Court. It is Wednesday, the 11th day of March 2020. It is 9:00 a.m. And we are at 114 West Buffington Avenue. At which time, we are calling this meeting to order. We will have an invocation, followed by the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Then we'll go to public comments. Would you please stand? Thoel, would you be so kind as to lead us in prayer this morning?
Little spray. Father God, we come thanking you for a new day. Thank you for the blessings that you are going to pour out upon this court on this day. We pray that every need will be supplied, every problem will be solved, every action that needs to be taken will be taken in an orderly, in a timely fashion. And Father, we know that you are God that says, "Hi," you look low. And Father, we need your approval. And Father, ask your blessings because we know America now is afraid of a virus that is called coronavirus. But Father, we know that you have the answer to every problem. So we put everything, even this court, into your hands. In Jesus' name we pray.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? I have notice of a public comment. And I'm going to say it's Rick?
Ricky.
Ricky. Ricky, let me work through this. Weintraub? All right. Ms. Weintraub, would you come to the podium, please? Identify yourself. And if you could, hold your comments for about two minutes.
My name is Ricky Weintraub. I live on CR 306, 4548. And I'm here because of personal issues, but also because I feel like it's something that the county needs to address. I understand we have a restriction in funds and manpower. But both of these issues came up when we did the strategic planning with Sam Houston University in the past. And my first one, again, personal, because my next door neighbor burns their garbage, which contains who knows what. I know tons of plastics because I can smell it. And I did my research with the State of Texas for the Texas Clean Air Act, and also through the RG-049, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And it definitely states in both publications that you're not to burn things that are toxic, such as plastic, treated wood, construction materials. But there is a caveat, because there are an exclusion in the RG-049 that addresses trash, private garbage, household trash, if the government does not provide trash pickup. But we also have local community trash depots, drop-boss. But we also know that there's just a few of them, and they're not easily accessible to a lot of the residents. But I'm not real sure how the counties addressed this in the past. Or I tried to find a remedy for myself, and I couldn't find one. So I'd like to present this to the court, that it is an issue. And it comes back to, we talk about the number of people, the people that are coming. I had heard an interesting comment on one of those city folks bringing city ways to the country. But the truth is, it's people coming to the country, are coming to the country to get away from those issues, from pollution. And so I feel like it's an important issue, and it's something that I need to address personally, but I think it's going to become an issue for other people. And real quickly, then, my second one has to do with animal control. I know that y'all are so tired of hearing about this, but it's a constant problem. But my issue isn't necessarily with animal control. It is with the fact that right now, I have a neighbor who I believe does not vet their animals. And they have a sick horse who has a respiratory infection, who's making my animals sick. I also looked through everything for the county, and I couldn't find a remedy for this or through the state. And I do believe that, again, it comes down to dollars, resources. But I do believe that bringing some of those city ways to the country is something that's we're all going to have to face. It's a reality. The people coming out here, they don't want an HOA, but they just don't want free rein. And they want to know that when they come to their public officials, that they can get an answer or some help.
I'm in court.
Please continue.
I'm sorry. And so I feel like this is something that should be addressed. And when it comes back down to the dogs and cats, when it comes to that lower level, it is a way that we can generate income. There's no reason, I understand that animals run free in the county, but there's no reason why they can't be licensed. In Houston, if you spay and neuter your animal, you get a cheaper license. Maybe it's going to be hard to police in the beginning, but again, it's up to this body to make laws and address it so that we can move forward and make it financially feasible and have better control over these issues.
This is the sheet that you submitted for your public speaking. Would you be so kind as to take this back, write the reg numbers that you referenced?
Okay, can I, do you want just the information, or you want me to just write it?
If you just write it.
Okay.
Because we're not really allowed to respond in public comments, but if I could have that for real, I'd appreciate it. And let me have that back to someone in the court before we leave.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, I don't have any other notices. Okay. Commissioner Wenske, appreciate it.
Yesterday, the Special Olympics for next week has been canceled, not by the local people, but by the area administrator for Special Olympics. They canceled all of them in East Texas for right now. We are going to try to reschedule if possible later in the spring. Because these kids have to participate in local, three locals, before they can go on to state, go to hell later on in the early summer.
Very good. So more postponed than canceled?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other public comments, commissioners? Announcements? Hearing done, we'll move on then to our consent agenda items, number three, number four, and number five. Consent agenda item number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Number five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and line item transfers. And those line item transfers are listed down through number six. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
On the page one, the account number and I, the account number should be 0047-0365.3036. And its description is TAC insurance claims.
Can you give me the report?
Do that one more time?
It's 0047.
You're talking about the bottom of the first page agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That should be?
And the description would be TAC insurance claims.
And that's 2931, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you're saying it's TAC insurance claim. Is it from Harvey?
Yes, ma'am, this one is.
Okay, that reason is stated on there. TAC damages. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns regarding those items?
I'd like to say to the FI group, your report is looking better. Still a lot of numbers, but looking better. Yes, ma'am, I realize that. I just wanted to give you props.
Thank you.
I did ask my question that I had for Mr. Harry, but if there are no other questions, then I'd like to say that I would like to make the motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, and five, first by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Cox, as to further discussion or comment. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Those motions carried. When that motion carries, we will now move to agenda item number six, PHI Air Medical. Kenny, is it Kerrar?
No, it's Kerrar.
Kerrar, okay.
Yeah, it's K-E-R-R.
Well, since you're talking about helicopters, you know Kerrar, and the air, that other.
I know, it kind of fit in, didn't it?
Yeah.
Like the weatherman named Stormy Weather. I know.
If you would identify yourself, please, and just share with us.
Sure. My name is Kenny Kerr, and I'm with PHI Air Medical, handle the membership sales for the air, for the South Texas area.
Can I kind of introduce you also?
Yes, please, please, definitely.
I had an opportunity, Mr. Lilly and I, to sit down and chat with her. She, PHI is the airship that CHI uses now, currently, to do its air medical transports. And so she had a, she presented a presentation to him and I, and I thought maybe everybody should hear it.
Sure.
Welcome.
Right, thank you.
And we did get a distribution of your PowerPoint presentation. At least yesterday, was that right, David? Yesterday, so we could have had an opportunity to review. I won't speak for everybody, but.
Good, well, no, no, it's no problem. And I apologize for not having something a little larger for you guys, but at least you've got an opportunity to come along with me here. And I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to come in and visit with you a little bit and speak and tell you a little bit about PHI, how we fit in with the CHI, St. Joseph's program, and how membership might fit in with your community. So.
Okay.
So who is PHI? We are a leading helicopter company, providing critical care resources into your community and communities just like yours all across the country. We were formed in 1949 as primarily an oil and gas company, providing land side, our operations to personnel, moving them from land side over to the oil and gas rates out into the Gulf. And in the eighties, we moved over into the air medical side, and we continue to provide critical care resources out to your first responders today, moving forward. So just to explain a little bit more about that PHI and CHI-St. Joseph relationship. We, many, you may see some pictures there of the yellow and black helicopter, as well as the CHI-St. Joseph helicopter. We have a lot of partnership type relationships with hospitals, with a lot of different types of bases. Many of our bases are standalone bases, what we call traditional bases, and they'll operate in that yellow and black schematic. Again, many of our relationships are partnerships with hospitals, and they'll take on that branding or that co-branding type schematic as the hospital, similar to what we do with the St. Joseph type program. We have different relationships with different hospitals all over, so not just here, but all over the country. So you'll see those take all the different forms. Next slide, the PHI Air Medical profile slide. When we take a look at PHI in general and our profile, our website, PHIAirMedical.com, you can find us there. Headquarters are in Phoenix, Arizona. We have about 90-plus aircraft nationally, around 1,800 employees, 83 bases, 18 of those of which are here in Texas. We do run a pretty broad swath across the state. Our membership program, which we'll talk a little bit more about today, is PHI Cares, and you can find that website at PHIcares.com. The next page. This page will just show you a little graphic of the proximity of some of the South Texas bases to Grimes County. Of course, you can see the closest one will be your CHI-St. Joseph Hospital program there in Bryan. Next closest would be our Conroe Base. It is housed out of the airport there in Conroe. We have the three bases, those three bases located in Houston, one at Ellington Field, one in Richmond, there's one in Columbus, of course, the Temple Base, which is the Baylor Scott &amp; White Program. We do have one in Bastrop, and then one in Victoria. There's one in Lufkin also, that's probably relatively close proximity to you guys as well. The rest would be further out off of this. We have a grouping up in East Texas, there's a grouping in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, and then we get further out west. So, but that'll give you some idea of proximity to where you guys are. If you take a look at the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about our base and our flight crew, because everybody's really interested in those folks and what they do and how they work. Our bases are staffed 365 days a year, seven days a week, with an extremely highly trained staff and crew. Each base has a flight paramedic, a flight nurse, pilot, mechanic, and then a medical director, which will oversee all of the bases and their clinical teams. Not only is that flight paramedic and the flight nurse trained and credentialed in their, licensed and credentialed in their respective field, but they are also trained in the areas of trauma, high-risk OB, NICU, pediatrics, cardiac specialty, respiratory therapy. These folks are, without a doubt, very highly trained. There's some of the folks that you definitely want at your side in some of our more high-risk situations.
Of the five bullet points that you have marked there, who is actually on the aircraft? Which of those?
Your paramedics, your flight paramedic, your flight nurse, and of course, your pilot who's flying. So those are actually on your aircraft. Mechanics are there 24/7 as well. They're always staffed. Our bases are always staffed with the four. Of course, our medical director is not there on the base, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, kind of what differentiates PHI Air Medical from, you know, some of the other flight teams out there, some of our other maybe competitors. Patient and crew safety is probably one of our, is our primary focus. I can honestly say it's our number-one focus. We, having had the number-one or the first vision safety, vision zero safety award out there, our teams and our crew begin thinking about safety before they even get on the aircraft. It's something that they train for daily. It's something that's top of the mind. We, you know, right now, we are at the forefront of fatigue, a fatigue study at this point, and we are leading that focus. Fatigue has always been something that's been a crisis point for some of our EMS, some of our first responder teams out there, and we are at the forefront of leading that focus and study right now. Our hiring standards, we employ some of the best and the brightest out there, and I mean, that's just what it takes to get them here. But that does not even take into consideration what they go through once they get to our point. They undergo some intense training and ongoing training once they get onboarded with us, and then, of course, they have to go through continuous training just to remain on the aircraft. We carry blood and plasma onboard. I don't know about every immediate aircraft in the area, but I do know that there are other aircraft that do not carry blood and plasma onboard. We have always been at the forefront of carrying blood and plasma onboard, and any first responder will tell you, blood and plasma onboard is the difference sometimes between life and death to a critical patient. And oftentimes, it is the difference between high quality of continuing care. And it's something that we have been on the forefront of. Again, we have 18 bases here in Texas and 83 nationwide. We are definitely one of the larger operators out there. There are some small one-off operators, but we are one of the third-largest operators out there, which makes a difference when you begin to talk about some of our membership programs, as we'll talk about here soon. And then, of course, we carry advanced medicines and medical equipment onboard to treat our patients en route. Some people, maybe not everybody in the room, but there are some folks that feel like our, some of them that transport the aircraft are just for a pickup and a transport quickly. And if you just see the folks in action one time, you'll realize that these folks are performing lifesaving maneuvers onboard, and they're doing it with lifesaving equipment onboard. So this is actually a lifesaving piece of equipment, the helicopter itself. It's truly a remarkable thing to see what they can do within that very confined space. Next slide, just a quick overview of the medical transport industry in general. About 550,000 flights, air medical transport flights every year globally. It equals about one flight every minute. I don't know how long we've been sitting here, but just think about that, and the statistics are a little overwhelming. Those statistics have risen over the years, and we just say that those typically are rising, just based on some demographics. We are kind of aging as a population demographically. And then, just by no fault of our own, or maybe some fault of our own, some of our rural resources are kind of going, healthcare resources are kind of going away, and that has driven some of the need for our air medical transport resources to increase.
These numbers apply to the industry, not just your company, correct?
Exactly, to the industry in general, not my company, yes, sir. So if you run to the next page, because we do fly in the community, and because we want to make sure that the cost of flights are not impactful to your residents or to the community in general, PHI offers a membership program. And we feel it's something that we want to make sure that the community can take advantage of, but we offer all forms of the membership. And we've been able to allow something that each type of the community can take advantage of. All right, that would tickle, so. To explain the membership a little bit better, if a patient is flown by PHI, or they're transported by PHI, and they're a member of the PHI Cares program, then they will incur no out-of-pocket expenses. What that means is they will pay no copay, no deductible, or no out-of-pocket, or no remaining balance. So essentially, it's the cost of the flight. There's no cost to the flight. So there's no limit to the number of times that a member can be flown and use the benefit, and there's no financial coverage limitation.
What do you mean by that?
So oftentimes, we have a pediatric patient or perhaps a debilitating, patient with a debilitating condition, and they may have to be flown, say, from here to MD Anderson, a cancer patient perhaps, or here to the burn unit, or somewhere twice in one year, or three times often. They could fly multiple times, and there would be no limit to the number of times they could fly and receive that financial benefit of the zero, the zero flight cost.
Thank you.
And we see this membership be so beneficial for those families that do have children with problems or families with a person, a member, family member that's got a debilitating Our household memberships basically cover all the person, one family member, and then all the dependent family members living in the household. And by that, we mean the family member and then all family members residing in the household, plus it does cover up to three non-family members living in the household. So an aunt that lives there, a roommate that lives at that household will also be covered in that household membership. They do have to reside at that address, however. So the four types, basic types of memberships that we offer are an individual membership, a household membership. We do offer group memberships to companies. We recently have been able to offer large bundled or cost-effective memberships to companies that want to offer it as a benefit to their employees to offset what their health insurance might not pay, or just the ability to come in and have each individual employee pay on their own, but still get the benefit of a more inexpensive cost than our regular cost of a household membership. And then, more recently, we've had a lot of interest in our unique coverage memberships, our citywide coverage and our countywide coverage. Citywide coverage, basically, we cover every resident in the city, and our countywide coverage, of course, correspondingly, we cover every resident in the county with coverage. Those coverages are what we call a limited scope, and it would cover the resident living there and some contiguous area when they were transported from that contiguous area. And the cost of membership would be extremely reduced. So those memberships, the costs are extremely inexpensive when you look at those multiple membership, multiple household memberships. Citywide, we've had recent success with the city of Bastrop. They recently signed up and covered all of their city residents. The countywide, Myrtle County recently covered their county. And those are typically paid for, of course, by the city or the county, but those are some, just unique ways to cover households and kind of get membership out there.
One question. You said there's a limited scope and cost reduced, so it's not zero cost?
It's not zero cost, no, ma'am. On limited scope... On limited scope, which one, you want me to talk about the city or the county?
County.
County. So the countywide coverage, it would cover all of the residents of the county. Typically, those are, let me back up and do the coverage. So the limited scope would cover every resident, every household in the county. So basically, every resident in the county. And it would cover them for transports in this county, if they're transported from this county, and any contiguous county surrounding. So that's where the transport area would be from, sorry. And the coverage would be, we would definitely want to give you a proposal, but the cost would range somewhere in the ten dollar per household or less. It's a sliding scale. So the number of households that you had, as that increases, the scale goes down. But it's definitely something that we would give the proposal based on the number that you have.
So you're proposing per household, not per person, not per resident?
No, because we do things on a household basis, we, that number's driven by the census count. Fortunately, we're on a census year, or unfortunately, depending on what you would look at it. We're on a census year, so if you looked at a proposal now, we'd take the census from 2010, that's the only one we have to go by. When you start to look at, it's my understanding that the census numbers for 2020 won't be out till 2021 of March. So we don't have those numbers to go by until that date.
When you also talk about households, what about employees? If an employee is working at an industrial complex or whatever, and they're not a citizen of the county? And if we had county coverage, would they be covered?
No, sir. So because it only covers the residents, if you have, and I get asked that question a lot, because you've got folks that are transient, what we call transient, and they either are driving up six, headed from Houston to the game, and they're driving through your county, they would not be covered, or they're employees and they work, they would not be covered. If they don't, if they're not a resident of the county, then they would not be covered. So in order for it to cover them, they would have to be a resident. My suggestion would be, if the county was interested in a countywide program, have the businesses themselves take a look at who the employees were, if they were not residents and weren't covered. And they could definitely take a look at some type of a program where their employees could take advantage of the coverage themselves. And we've done that quite aggressively in Bastrop County, where Bastrop themselves were covered, and then their, say, their county employees all took a very, took advantage of a very aggressive, what we call national plan. They were covered nationally at all of our bases, so. And that brings up another thing, which I apologize, I could though, where on your countywide coverage, everyone's eligible to take advantage of a reduced rate national program. So they can buy up for the national coverage if they want to at a reduced rate on that national, on that limited scope plan.
On the, on the different bases and the different locations, who makes the call where someone goes? If y'all are dispatched, you pick up a heart patient or what have you, who makes the call where that patient goes for medical attention?
It varies. Sometimes it's the first responder. Most of the time, it's probably the first responder on the ground. Sometimes it might be the person on the aircraft themselves. But a lot of times, it's going to be based on what's best for the patient. If you're closer to the south side, and it's going to be best for the patient to go to the closest hospital on the south side, you know, the Woodlands, it's going to be better to go that way. You know, that's probably more of a clinical question, probably something that one of those guys should answer. But typically, it's probably going to be a first responder that's going to make that decision. And I know sometimes our first responders, I think this county might be a little different, where the first responders might be your EMS folks. But sometimes we get first responders that are your fire departments and things like that in some of our counties. So I think, you know, it's going to be first responders that are probably your first call on that. I know sometimes our patients might even have some say in where they go to, so. Any other questions?
Not at this time, not for me.
Is the proposal something that you guys would like to see at this time, or?
Have you had an opportunity to look at the demographics for, out of the 2010 census and know how many households we have in Grimes?
I do know how many households you guys have. There are eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-three.
And you said the price could range anywhere from ten dollars or less per household? And that's at a reduced cost. What is a reduced cost?
So it would be, the price that I'll give you here would be ten dollars or less. But if you'd like to take a look at a proposal, I can definitely give that to you privately.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carter, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Yes, ma'am. But we appreciate you approaching us with this opportunity. And of course, budget time is coming up, so it's a good time to approach us with it. But it is also a time that we're negotiating a contract also with CHI St. Joseph. And we're discussing, they have had some changes in their access to subscriptions. They know that these things are being offered to counties and things. So those are one of the things we're exploring also with them in terms of what they offer on their end out of the contract and then what you all, because you still work with CHI St. Joseph.
We do, we do.
You're just basically trying to offer us the patient reduced cost in terms of if you're transported by air medics. But it's not going to prohibit CHI from calling you all anyway on transport.
Well, I mean, our membership program is, what it does is, if they are transported by CHI or by another PHI helicopter. So if a patient is transported by the CHI St. Joseph helicopter, or if they happen to be transported by the PHI helicopter, which I say they're not really different, but by the yellow and black helicopter, the one that's closer to Conroe, which happens often because those folks are going to oftentimes catch those folks in Magnolia, or right there, Todd Mission, that area. Or if for some reason, the folks in Columbus catch them, or on the-
On the temple.
Temple, you're right, the Scott and White crew. If they are transported, if this county program were to kick in, then they would not receive a bill. However, I mean, I do have to say that, if they were transported by another aircraft, that this membership program would not cover them. So they do have to be transported by PHI aircraft. St. Joe, St. Joseph, CHI St. Joseph is a PHI aircraft. And the other, the temple, our base in Conroe, all of the ones I pointed out, those are all PHI aircraft. So they work, we work together. The membership basically will cover and kick in if anyone is flown.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we will go, now go to Agenda Item Number Seven, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Mr. Al Peder, update on ongoing projects. One would be the Grimes County Courthouse, another would be Grimes County Jail, and another would be the Grimes County Justice Center.
Good morning, Commissioner Judge. We'll start with the courthouse because it's listed as the courthouse. Repointing is to the southwest corner and moving around. They've ground everything, Judge has got mortar coming through in his office. They have started gutter work. We have found, it's been rotted in a lot of places for a long time once we started pulling stuff off, especially at the corners where it has to make the turn. That will be fixed. It was in the scope of work. So windows are about ninety percent complete, painted, and/or put back in. We are sealing some windows off so that it, they'll never be able to open. And sealing means we're just panning them, MP wanting them around the frame so that no weather can get back into them. Then windows are in the elevator shaft. We found that during Harvey, that I had window shades in the elevator shaft that I can't get to unless I take the window out. We're planning on the restoration part, but we're fixing that. Besides that, if there's any questions on the courthouse, go ahead. That's really the update on it. We're just steadily moving along. We are, we are, we have currently no rain days with them. They're right on schedule.
Are we still on schedule for May completion?
June.
June.
June, because we did-
Repointing.
Repointing, change order. No questions on that. Moving to the jail. So jail, jail has two days, the roof, we, so we have a couple of things going on at the jail. We have roofing and we have mold remediation. Roofing had two days, rain shut down. They're welding all the old and the new seams on the TPO roof. So far, they've replaced thirteen sheets of foam. Now, a sheet is four by ten, and thirteen sheets is a lot. But we knew that going in. We knew infrared showed us where all our water was. It was not a surprise. What's surprising was when we pulled the flashing away from the walls, they didn't even seal them down to the walls. They just put it up there, screwed the sheeting on, and that was that. So we found a lot of infiltration when we started removing stuff. Power washing will be a continued effort because of the construction for the justice center is kind of, when they get moving, it throws dust on the white, and they're kind of, well, can they stop and all that? I fixed that. They're applying new adhesive down, getting ready, preparing the surface for the first layer of the coating on Friday. So we have to have adhesive down before we lay our coating down. So actually, it's going good on that front. Frontier moved in Monday. They mobilized, they kicked everybody out of their office, including John C. They quarantined the admin area, started cleaning. They have twelve people in the process of doing all this. They'll start cleaning the HVAC system in that area. This is phase one. Because of the way the HVAC system is laid out and how we have to contain, we have to break it down in three phases. I chose to take care of the law library, JP. And I know I'm going to mess some of these, you guys got acronyms for every office over there?
DPS.
DPS, CID, is that correct? That one across the hallway, John? So we, we've taken that area first because we had some areas that people were going to conference. We could move people easily. We did that. We should be out of there on that. If we pass testing, they should return back Monday at their office.
What are they doing between now and then?
Who?
Those people that you kicked out of their offices?
That is not a question for the maintenance manager, that would be department heads in that area.
One of them's in Commissioner's court.
I'm not answering, I don't, I don't have an answer for it.
Self-quarantine.
So, so that is going to be, that, that phase should be, if we pass the test on Monday, then back, and then we're going to move across the hall and part of the foyer when you walk into the jail because of the way the HVAC runs. Did not design that well sooner or later, but not right now.
Just remind me, we are not having to do mold remediation throughout the entire sheriff's office jail complex, correct?
No.
Know what? I'm wrong?
Yes.
So we're doing everything under roof?
The entire building.
So what are we going to, this is a question for someone. So are we going to have to vacate some areas of the jail while the mold remediation is going on?
No. No, we're not. We're, we're, and Todd's here, so-
This is an answer for department head, go ahead.
We're going to section it off and have areas cleaned as we go. So we'll be shuffling the crimes in there to different cells, clean these, move them back, and stuff like that. So, you know, we do have to self-safeclean if you have to move them. But our plan is not to, we're just going to move them around and get the cleanings done on our side of the building. You know, DPS is still working, our investigators are still working. You know, they're just more, still working out of their cars and kind of satellite offices in our side of the building. Now, once that side is cleaned, we'll move some of our people over to the other side while they do our side. We're going to stay up and running if we got to.
Sure. And we have, what, a hundred and eleven beds, but we only have about a sixty, fifty to sixty?
Actually, we're lower than that right now.
Are we, okay.
Yeah. And, and even if it comes, comes to it, you know, we'll look at low-risk, you know, short-term offenders, you know, weekends, you know, stuff like that. And have the courts move those out so we won't have to mess with those.
I just wanted to ask the question because I, it's easy, I think it's easier to move the county attorney and some of their folks out of their office than some of the inmate situations.
And we're thankful that we're low. We've talked on this part with Frontier. Because there, it brings some questions that, you know, we can't shut down dispatch. We can't shut down the kitchen. So what we'll try to do is block that up, bubble the stuff, and they'll have to zipper. And we'll just clean the areas around it, not in it.
That's fine.
But in their offices, we're cleaning everything. So that's how we're going to handle that. We have had conversations, the jail will be the third phase. We're not going into the third phase until, I gave you a zealous number of, I'd like to have this complete in three weeks. I'm going to, I'm going to be there, but it's going to be- I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there, but it's gonna be probably four or five weeks.
Okay.
And that all depends on testing. You know, I mean, they clean, they get everything done, then we have to retest, and if we fail there, they gotta come back and reclaim. I've never had that problem working with Frontier. Usually, when they clean, they pass that, but there's always that chance.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
So, your, your roof repair be, is projected to be completed when?
Uh, it was the twenty-fifth. We got two days rain, so we're at the twenty-seventh now.
So, by the end of March?
We're hoping, depending on...
And then your mold remediation, your plan on that is to be through by?
Hmm, I don't have, I, I can't give you a completion date on that just because of the testing, Judge.
Okay.
Any other questions on the jail? Okay. Moving to the new, the Ju- uh, Justice Center. As of right now, we have a hundred and forty piers drilled as of about eight-thirty this morning. Um, they had to shut, they shut down, me and Harry were out there, uh, Monday, Monday it was, uh, and Todd was watching the clouds. He drilled some and was waiting on concrete trucks just as it was spitting. Well, over the night, it just, we didn't get a heavy rain, we just got a saturating drizzle. So, when you put a concrete truck on that drizzle out on that pad, it wants to sink to China. So, he vowed not to do any drilling Tuesday, yesterday, but he is on it this morning. David Dobianski, Commissioner Dobianski was out there.
Was he anywhere, or is he helping?
Nah, he, he helped that day. I mean, the fish pictures didn't help, but, um, that's not true.
Just went, went slow there, probably.
So, I had an issue of, uh, moving the area where the transport tunnel, if that's what you wanna call it, gateway to the new building, we have to move four sections of fencing. We brought Todd, uh, Chief Green. He happened to be there wanting to see, so I said, "Good, you're a commissioner. You can come out here and see what I'm talking about." So, if you say yes, then it's all on you. Be aware, if you come out, I'm gonna use ya. My only question to them was, before they did anything, they have to drill piers there, eighteen-inch piers. But before they started tearing apart the fence, one, I wanted to make sure security was right. Two, I wanted to make sure that this isn't a change order because I couldn't find it in the, in the scope. After further review and more knowledgeable people than I, they found it in the scope. It is in the scope. It will cost us nothing. They are gonna start moving that fence back, cut the security to that one door, right? There, there's a shut in that one door, right? So, then they will put their piers and pour that pad. Anything else? That's all I got on that.
How many rain days have you added to their...
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fifteen. Sorry, I didn't count Monday.
Thank you.
Or yesterday. Any other?
Any questions for Mr. Peeler?
You got nothing, Judge?
No.
Good job.
You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Well, now move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Human Resource Director Lucy Pope. Consider and approve changing the records management clerk from grade two to grade three, see attachment eight. Ms. Pope?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, the county clerk sent me this revised job description on her record management clerk. She would like to change it, change this clerk from a grade two to a grade three. Now, uh, is this right, Vanessa? There's no money involved at this time? It's just changing the grade from grade two?
At this time, just change the grade, yes.
Grade to, grade three.
What's the change that elevates it from a two to three?
It's her, uh, she, you wanna explain that?
Yes, I'll be glad to.
Okay.
So, she, uh, does, um, more duties than the previous clerk. So, she comes to our office, she takes the mail, she takes the money deposits over to the treasurer's office. So, she does handle money. She does fill in when we have a clerk out. So, she's, you know, interacting with customers, taking money, those type of things. Um, she also, um, you know, does a lot of requests for, for copies from clients over the phone and via email, um, in addition to her duties with, uh, recording all the Commissioners' court minutes.
Okay. I, I'm not opposed to getting the jobs right, you know, to get the salary structure, but we've put a policy in where we're effectively doing these reviews in February.
She did give it to me at the end of February, but I, I didn't have a chance to get on the agenda to bring it before Commissioners' Court.
Oh, okay, because we'd set this up to do this in February and May.
Right, that is correct. But she didn't, uh, present this to me till the last week of February, and so this is the first chance I've had to get it on the agenda.
February and May or February through May?
It's February, May.
It's February, May. Two months. And I would recommend to the Court, as stated pre, in previous meetings, that we should follow that policy.
And I went on and made a copy of the grade two where she was, you know, where she was at, at a grade two, and then the new revised job description for grade three.
So, with what you're saying, what you just said, what you're saying is you're asking for it to be effective immediately, or is this a change for the upcoming?
I like the, the grade to be effective immediately, but, uh, as far as, um, you know, compensation, that'll wait till budget time. Right now, her salary won't change, and it's, it's in within that, that job description.
Come on. I mean, I, we have a policy that addresses this very issue, and I think we passed that policy with the intent on following that issue. It's a time, a timely...
So, what is your suggestion, Commissioner?
I think we take this up as the policy dictates, either in February or May.
Is there a consensus on that? Are you making a motion to review this in May?
I will make a motion, Judge. Uh, I make a motion, or I move that we review the record management clerk's grade scale per policy in May of 2020.
Is there a second? Second. There's a motion before the Court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Mallard. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling this until the, for a May review, say aye?
Yeah.
Aye, aye, oppose? Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, if you'll put it on the first agenda for May, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
We will now go to Agenda Item Number Nine, Emergency Management Services Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly.
Yes, sir. Uh, Judge, Commissioners, uh, the head of the Grimes County First Responders, uh, Chief, I call him Chief Tamplin, uh, he was the former fire chief for Todd Mission. Uh, he's now the head of the First Responders. Uh, he requested that, uh, the Commissioners consider adding their ten dual-band radios to the county count, much like we did for the fire departments. And this would actually constitute five handheld and five mobile radios that are, uh, dual-band. They have the ability to use VHF and the seven-hundred, eight-hundred trunking. Currently, they have eight active members, uh, so this will, and they're, they're not looking to buy all ten right now. Uh, they're looking to buy six of them, six, three handheld, three mobile, but they're eventually gonna procure ten total. And he's already coordinated with Thomas Gilbert at the COG on the viability of these radios. Uh, Thomas has confirmed that these radios are suitable to be used on BBWAX.
So, if they're only gonna buy, I mean, if they're only gonna have six on, why would we put ten on?
Eventually, by the end of the year, they're gonna have a total of ten.
Okay, but by the end of what year?
This year.
The budget year?
Yes, sir. That's their plan, is to purchase ten total. They're, I'm not sure why they're doing it in two separate phases, but, uh, they're buying initially six, and then they get to get the remaining four.
And these numbers will affect Mixture's budget, right?
Yes.
So, we can put them on now, there's no additional charge from COG?
Right. It won't, just like we did when we added Todd Mission's Fire Department. It will not affect our, our cost now.
Gotcha.
But it will be, uh, factored into what we do for 2021.
So, what I thought I heard you asking, for me, I would consider, why not pay for what we're putting on the system? And then as we add the other radios, then you add them to the system, because you're still gonna be paying a monthly subscription.
Right.
If you say ten now, and you only have six, you're paying for ten.
Well, we're not gonna be paying for anything yet.
Yeah. Even when they bill you?
They're not gonna bill us?
No, they're not. These ten will not factor into the cost of the county's paying for the radios at any point this year yet. It won't take, take effect until next year, the additional radios that we've added in. That'll be factored into how much we pay per unit next year when they start working the BBWAX budget.
Okay, so...
This year will not change our cost at all, whether we say six or ten.
I, I understand on the build, billing, you're not being billed till next year.
Right.
But why be billed for something that's not on the system currently?
By next year, they'll have ten. Like I said, they're only...
But they're gonna put them on here immediately, right? The six?
The six are gonna have the three mobiles installed, uh, within next two weeks or so, depending on how quickly. They're working with Texas Communications on getting them installed. Uh, and then, once they get those in the field, then they'll determine which vehicles the other two, uh, mobile radios will go into and complete the installation, and then, of course, procure the other two handheld. So, like I said...
Maybe my understanding is bad, but I still hear six radios going on the system.
They're, they're not gonna charge us additional on our 2020 budget. We can add more radios, and they're gonna only adjust the budget for 2021, and they'll go, "Oh, you added six, or you've added ten during 2020." So, now for the 2021 budget, we've gotta allocate those funds for that.
And all they're asking for you to do is to approve adding a total of ten to the overall count for next year.
Right.
By the end of this year, they will have ten.
And that'll be, that'll be submitted with the First Responder's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But the, are we being billed next year for the usage that we have this year, number of radios?
No, no. We'll be billed for how many we have next year.
But next year, you don't, as of now, they're putting six on the system.
Right.
Okay, so next year, they're intending to have ten?
No, by the end of this year.
By the end of this year?
Yes, ma'am. Again, they're, they're just doing it in two separate phases. Really, I don't want you to get too hung up on that number six and four, uh, 'cause they're looking, this year, they had the money set aside to purchase ten radios total, and whatever reason, they're just starting with the six, and then they're gonna get the remaining four before the end of the year. They have the money in their budget now to get all ten.
Right. But I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how the county, how does that affect the county next year? If we're getting, well, if we're billed for how many we have on this year, and we put ten on, but we only need six?
We can add as many more this year on our system.
To determine what our ability is next year.
Uh, it doesn't affect what, 'cause what we already negotiated for was the number we had initially, uh...
So, so, so what happens every year? We just did an inventory count. So, we just submitted the inventory count of all the radios that Grimes County has on the system, and we submit that to BBWAX. Now, BBWAX will take those numbers and take the numbers from all the other agencies involved, and they'll formulate the new operating budget that they're formulating now that we'll be voting on here in their sponsor team. So, they'll set that budget, and that's where we get the price per radio. Now, once then, until next February, when we start doing the inventory count again, the, the price per radio won't change. So, if we add some radios throughout the year, it'll stay the same. It won't come into effect until February, when we take the next radio count and say, "Okay, now we added ten more radios," and then that will go into the new budget year and we'll start paying for that. But you also gotta look, too, is radio numbers should be reducing, the subscription fees should be reducing because...
More users.
We're pulling in Madison County, we're looking at doing Leon County, and Burson County in the coming futures, too. So, if those radios come in also, you'll put the monthly subscriber rate lower also. So...
I understand you're lowering your rate, but I also know that they're counting those radios.
They're not counting them yet.
Once a year?
Because we already timed...
Once a year.
Once a year. So, we've already timed the radio account.
So, you can add them without any additional fees until the next...
Because you're already paying for last year's radios this year.
Well, we timed in the count. So, when we first opened, we said we're gonna have two hundred radios come in. Yeah, so they figured out, "Okay, you're surprised it was her radio, so you have to have two hundred," so we paid it. Now, we just turned in the radio count in February, so the budget will come out, and that's gonna be the price per unit going into next February, and then we'll turn the radio count again. So, any radios we add in between, as long as we don't come in and dump two hundred radios on, if it's, you know, a handful here and there, there's not gonna be an issue. Now, if we come up and say, "Oh, well, we're cheating the system and wanna try to dump two hundred radios in," now, they're gonna come and charge us. But if you have ten and stuff like that, they will be a grace period until the new radio count comes, and those will be added in. And then, once that happens, the new budget will take effect, and the new radio subscription rate will come into effect, and then they're gonna say, "Okay, y'all have two hundred, five radios now, here's the price." And then, and then they bill us quarterly per...
Yep.
I know it's, it's, it gets confusing, uh, you know, like I said, we're, we're operating with a...
What you're approving is to approve the ten radios. Regardless if they put five, or six, or ten on right now, 'cause those won't go in until they actually get the radios installed and get authenticated onto the system, the one they actually register at Grimes County. So, if you put six today and four next month, it's still gonna be the same until February, when we turn in the new count of next year.
And, and it's no different than when you approved the, adding the additional ten radios for Todd Mission. That additional ten radios did not change our amount that we pay this year, or the number of radios we're paying for this year. It will take effect again when the new budget is formulated, formulated next year.
Okay.
Did that?
Now, you are being approached by an additional so many radios. If you dump all those radios along with these radios?
Additional...
From CHI?
No, those will not be on, that's gonna be...
That's gonna actually be placed by a different organization.
Yeah, they'll be in the overall count for the region, but they won't be on, on our count for the Grimes County.
So, they're not...
They're going under the, the racks, the...
So, they're not, they didn't ask you to move from the rack to this one?
No, these, for the First Responders, these are our volunteer EMS.
Yeah, I know who the First Responders...
They work under, well, they, they follow the same protocols as Grand, uh, St. Joseph, but they, they're not under St. Joseph. They're, they're independent of them. They're, like I say, much like our volunteer fire departments, they function strictly for Grimes County.
Okay, I'll talk to you afterwards, but we talked about this with CHI moving from the rack over to Grimes County. So, when we start talking about large numbers, that's why I'm, but yes, this is fine.
Yeah, as far as that, but, but, the far as the radios, the radios are not caught, they're not added to our count for St. Joseph.
And they, they had asked in the past for radios, and we're just, um, bringing them on to the system. And I think the question had been if they purchased the radios, or do Grimes County purchase the radios?
Right.
So, we're glad to have the First Responders on to the system. I just wanted to make sure we're not paying a subscription price ahead of time...
No.
That even though you're gonna be billed the next time...
Right.
You're still paying.
Right.
So, that's all I wanted to avoid.
That will not take effect until next year.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the addition of Grimes County ten radios for, uh, Todd Mission.
No.
First responder, I'm sorry. Second. There's a motion before the Court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Mallard. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grimes County Commissioner Presen three, Commissioner Barbara Walker, discuss and approve emergency services agreement between CHI St. Joseph and Grimes County.
Okay. Well, to bring the court up to speed, we reviewed this contract, I think the year before last, or last year, and we, this contract took us till April first, 2020, so it does expire April first, 2020, this year. So during that process, we discussed some things that we questioned, whose protocol, who's making the call, whose, some things need to be clarified, and some things were removed, because this, this whole contract started out in the nineties, if I made no mistake, and it's been amended, and amended, and amended. So now it's been cleaned up, it's been refreshed, and since St., it was originally with St. Joseph, now it's with CHI St. Joseph, so your parties have changed, but I'll go, I refer over to Mr. Foles, if you would like to explain some of the changes that we see.
Great. My office has been quarantined, I think we got this Monday, right? So I haven't printed it, and I haven't, I received it from Erin, who is the administrator. I met with her last Friday after a meeting that I attended with Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Mallett, where many of these issues were hammered out, but there was no finality as far as the language for the proposed changes. And so Erin asked that she and I meet last Friday, and we did, and covered the few things that were on, were notes of mine and notes of hers, and she sent it to their attorneys, and then we received the draft from her Monday or Tuesday via email. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to print it. Todd told me how I can get through the zipper door, so I can now, there's a way to go in and get it, but I don't access emails from the county other than in my county office. So my understanding is she was gonna make the changes we talked about at our meeting. There still remains the issue, though, of the exclusive issue of the helicopter, and so that needs to be addressed by you as a court, and tell me, or tell the members of the emergency services committee whether or not we wanna approach CHI to make a change, to potentially remove that provision, or allow us to engage with the folks from Washington County as well as the folks with CHI. I don't know whether any of those are options or not, but I haven't done that.
Well, I did speak with Erin and Billy Rice on yesterday, who is now the director of EMS Services, and they did address subscriptions in the, in the new contract. If you would feel more comfortable reviewing it prior to us agreeing to it, if we should agree, then that would be fine, okay? But I just wanted to get the ball rolling on the talks, because time is of the essence.
Sure, and I would say, Commissioner, I don't know that the rest of the court has seen it until now, so they'd need an opportunity to digest a six or eight, ten-page document, I mean, seen the changes. So if, if the court was comfortable with it, I would be okay with you saying you approve it based upon my review and approval of the changes that were made. Far as I recall, the things that Erin and I talked about, while they were substantive, they were really about addressing, addressing complaints and various things that needed some clarity versus significant modifications to the document. So if you felt comfortable, or it felt like that there was some urgency, I would be okay with you approving on that condition. If not, put it on the next agenda in March, we still got some time to get it done.
Okay, the other thing, you talked about the subscription. In previous contracts, it didn't address the subscription, but it, it talks about in this contract, if a subscription service were offered, St. Joseph agrees to offer, offer the service to all citizens of the county, regardless of the insurance coverage. The program would cover all medically necessary transport. So just some clarity on that. I, I would like to have more clarity.
Is that supposed to apply to the helicopter, or do you know?
Um, yes. It says St. Joseph does not currently offer subscription services, but we had talked to Billy about being approached by PHI and also Washington County, so they've added this language in there, so, because both of them are out and couldn't be here, they're out on spring break, and so I would suggest putting it on a future, a future agenda, so they could be here and address the prob, the answers or questions that the court may have. But the term on this contract, I want to also say, would, would effectively be the same terms that we looked at previously, where we would agree to a period of five years, and then automatically renew for two, two years, commencing the fifth and the seventh anniversaries, which is what we've had in the past. It takes us effectively from, from this year until 2029, basically. But you also have reasons that should you decide to terminate the contract, or not move forward with the renewal, you do have certain days, sixty days prior, that you can cite your reasons why, and, and effectively not renew. But I would say that because of the delay in getting these contracts back and forth, that I would feel more comfortable if everybody had an opportunity to review-
Absolutely.
And we had them here to answer the questions. So I would suggest that it's either, if putting it on a regular agenda is, is pushing us on time, then we set a, a date to really just hammer out the, in, in one session, I mean, in one agenda, just one agenda item. So if we have to wait two weeks, that's fine, but if, if another agenda comes up, I would say possibly prior to two, two weeks, then that would be great, because then we've gotta get it back to St. Joseph and get a signature for it to be effective.
We might be able to, but I, I think space availability, space availability is going to be an issue. I guess we can check with Anderson City Hall.
And if not, is it possible, do, do these type of meetings, is regular meetings or special meetings required to be held in the county seat, or can we have a hosted meeting in that? So that question came up this week, so.
You could put a meeting somewhere else.
Okay.
We've done that with LA PC and the other ones.
Right, I'll ask the question, and maybe you have some clarity on it, because I haven't addressed this directly with Erin or anybody over there. What Washington County is proposing is something different than what PHI would provide. If, the issue is, who's gonna have the exclusive right to transport folks for medical purposes? I think that Washington County, the guy from Washington County indicated they would still help with rescue, but their income comes from the medical transport. So that may kick them out altogether, where they say, we don't wanna participate at all if you're gonna have exclusive arrangement for that purpose, just medical transport. But I haven't addressed that issue with CHI at all. I don't know whether you did, or whether Chad did.
Well, I, in talking with Billy, I did ask him about that situation, and about the PHI situation. He's willing to talk with both entities, and, but he had not been approached by Washington County. But Washington County are training the people they hire up under CHI's purview, so he's willing to have those talks, but I would suggest that any questions that we have, that we get him here, pose them to him, and let them answer.
My recollection with talking with Erin was that there was some benefit to the relationship that they have with PHI, which is separate and apart from CHI, but there's some benefit to maintaining that relationship and their helicopter service, but it just seemed to me from, and this is not, I don't need to be engaged in policy, but the things that the Washington County folks intend to provide are well above just providing medical transport, such that I would hope that we would be able to work, and, and that CHI would say to us that they would understand our need or desire to wanna work with the folks in Washington County, so that we'll provide that additional service to the folks in Grimes County.
Well, this contract covers mutual aid, I mean, so they are not opposed to mutual aid from, from any of our surrounding counties. It's just that he said that they had not been approached-
I got you.
And he understands the program, because he's worked with both, both positions. He understands the program, but in his current position, they had not approached him, and so I would say, giving them some time to, giving Billy some time to get back here and answer the questions that we need, I would say we could possibly look at the next agenda and meet with Billy in between there, so that he could be present, Erin, or somebody from the hospital-
Have answers for our question.
Could have answers for the questions.
Mr. Foles, a question for you. If, if there's an automatic renewal on the current contract, do we need to send them a letter of notification that we're not, we're not moving into an automatic renewal, we're still in negotiations or revision of the current contract?
I don't have the document in front of me, but if there's an automatic renewal, there's probably a time by which the notice needs to be submitted.
That's what I'm getting at.
We've, one would, I think-
Sixty days.
We could make the argument to them, because we would be out, we would be within that timeframe, so we, we, it would be too late. I think we've already indicated to them that we want to renew, but on different terms. And so I think by engaging the negotiation that we've engaged in, I think we're okay.
You're comfortable?
Yeah. Yeah, and you all, as a court, know that they're in a situation where they wanna continue to stay in Grimes County, which is extremely beneficial to the people of Grimes County, and that you have a facility over there that has to be used as a hospital. So if you terminate this, you're gonna be needing to be looked for somebody else, and to have somebody else come in at this point and start from scratch, obviously, I, I think that may be difficult.
Good.
So we could look at the next agenda. I, I would, I would suggest that we table this until the next regular agenda, and that would give us time to meet with CHI for you all to review it also.
Do you, do you wanna take on, maybe this is absolutely too much, do you wanna take on the 1115 waiver on that day for the benefit of the court also? Or no?
I think it's an issue of discussion.
I would, I would need St. Joseph's specialist in there.
I didn't mean you, yeah, I didn't mean you in particular, right, I would, too. But my point was that there was a time where we had an understanding that you weren't supposed to have a contract in writing in order to get, get the hospital the benefit of that waiver program. We all believe now that you can have this contract for the facility and, or for the emergency services.
EMS services.
My understanding is that 1115 program's going to continue, but maybe with some slight modifications, so the court is aware, I'm sure that all of you are, without that program, there are real concerns about whether there will be rural hospitals, or whether we'll have a rural hospital, which-
Right.
That's a big concern, obviously.
It, it is a tremendous concern, because that, that 1115 waiver is now in the phasing-out phase, and unless the legislators or the federal government looks at it again, it is getting ready to terminate in the near future. And so where in the past, services for EMS services were handled by the county in an annual payment, those things may come back to us somewhere in the future. Of course, the 1115 waiver also covered indigent care, you know, to our patients that go there to the hospital, so it's a broad scope of things that it covers, and, and the changes in 2017 then included the EMS services. We're hoping and praying that they're going to continue the program, but we really need someone, it's always been a complicated animal, and, and so to have that specialist there. So if you're saying that having a workshop would be beneficial, then I would say, let's do that, let's, let's have a workshop. There, the last couple of meetings we've had, they've had their 1115 waiver, or their finance, chief financial officer there to speak to it.
And the reason I say that is because the two of you, and I happen to leave that for a funeral, but the two of you got to hear that, I don't know that the rest of the members of the court, the judge may have heard it before, but this is an issue that's come up before, and it's far beyond my ability to explain.
Yes, we could do a workshop in between the next regular meeting, try to get them in a room to do a workshop with the commissioners' court, and I'm looking at you and the judge, I'm looking at, you should read, but I'm also talking to the judge, a workshop would be great.
Well, if it can't be done, then it can't be done, and maybe you do, the 25th, you could do separate from the regular, you could have a later agenda to cover that issue, whatever.
We'll see what their timeline is like.
Sure.
Get back with me. I'll put a note to follow up with you, and we'll figure out.
So we're, there's a consensus agreement to table agenda item number ten-
Mm-hmm.
-to the next agenda, or possibly sooner, or possibly a workshop. Is that agreed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Judge?
Yes.
On, on meeting places, don't forget that school district up there has a boardroom, and they, I had a meeting scheduled there a couple of weeks ago, but we were able, didn't have to use that, 'cause we moved that meeting to the night.
What school district?
Anderson School District.
Okay, how big is that?
It's, the, the boardroom is, is pretty big, but they also have a small conference room, if you can have a small meeting in.
Yeah, but if we were having a-
A board, the board, the board meeting that they have, if I'm not mistaken, is about twice as big as this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll now go to Rodden Bridge engineer, Harry Walker, for our Rodden Bridge report.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Crews are doing a lot of blading right now, picking out quite a bit of rock, and we're starting to shift into our preparation for paving for the summer. First area we're gonna be working on is up off, neighborhood off of 172, Del Meadow, Hampton Creek, that area. Guess we're kinda moving out of our winter activities, more into the summer type activities. We've also, some other things going on. We started hauling rat material from TexDOT this week. We had an allocation of 1,200 cubic yards, we hauled out half of that yesterday, should finish up today, so one of the benefits we get, it's a free service from TexDOT, they provided to us.
That's great.
TexDOT also is wrapping up the fieldwork on their bridge inspection program, they do this every two years, and we've been getting some preliminary information in on that. As a result of the preliminary information we've got, we are adding, we've gone out for design on some repairs to one of the bridges on County Road 215. In addition, it's not one of our EMP projects, it's an additional bridge, but we're looking at doing a repair there. There were a couple of bills from, from the structural engineer in your packet this time. We're also working on the, the three EMP bridges. Paul's doing a repair package for 204, and replacement packages for 112 and 323, those would be our EMP projects. I'm trying to get all that going here before we get into the summer, get too, too busy with paving. We also, we've been picking up still a lot of trees, gone down trees over the, the winter that we're still catching up on elsewhere. The, on the new shop building, work is in a temporary halt there, the contractor to pull off for some emergency work on another project, they should be back next week. We've got the structure, the structural steel is all up, but they haven't started putting any of the sheeting or anything on yet, so hope to get back into that here quickly. I spent a lot of time with the, the folks from the general land office lately. We were, last time we all approved the package of documents for the county's Hurricane Harvey grant. We've also been meeting with the small towns that are getting the Hurricane Harvey grants, I attended kickoff meetings for that. The county should be having a kickoff meeting coming up hopefully next week, if everything gets scheduled for, for our Hurricane Harvey grant. And then we'll continue to work on the 2015 and 2016 grant projects. Right now, the, the 202 bridge, we're waiting on the cable splasher to finish, we had to relocate a fiber optic cable to allow for the construction of the bypass on that. They're now telling us that won't be done until the 19th, so- They're now telling us that won't be done until the 19th, so kind of delayed getting started on the, the bypass of the bridge itself. And then the 2016 grant, the surveyors are out working, the geotech has started, so you may have gotten some calls from people wanting to know what's going on, why all the flags and everything going on, are different roads. So that work's getting going as well. And also I wanted to add, some of our employees, about eight of them, attended some more UTR Lexington training, this time on preventative maintenance on, on various types of vehicles that we use. This is training for the operators so they could do the routine, train in maintenance and know what to look for and keep an eye on their equipment so small problems, big problems. And also I'd like to, to point out, as of this week, Rodden Bridge is going back to 410s for field support. So moving into summer mode.
I do have a comment concerning the, the surveying of 206. Got a call Saturday wanting to know if we were going to build a bridge across the, the creek down 206. I thought, no, I don't think so.
All of, all of the drainage work that's planned in that 2016 grant will be enlarging covert structures. We have no new bridges planned.
Yeah, and that's what I told them.
Right answer.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have your paving schedule together to where we could receive a copy of it?
We have been putting, we, we know which roads we intend to do. We've been sort of sorting out what we're going to do ourselves and what we're going to have the contractor do. If you give me about another week to work on that, then I'll distribute that to everybody.
Okay, thank you. One other question. Are we going to use contractors this year like you did this past year or?
Yes, ma'am. So that's part of what we're trying to sort out now is how much and which, which particular projects the contractor will do and what we'll do in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number 11, under County Judge Joe Faust, discuss and take action to hire legal assistance for the upcoming redistricting process if determined that help is needed. Attachment Number 11. I've received a, just a, a letter from Allison Bass and McGee and Jim Allison, who most of us are familiar with, he's spoken at our TAC conferences in the past. They offer an assistance for redistricting. Is Kat Lee in here? She is not, sir?
She's not in. She's off this.
Oh, okay, that's right. She's on a cruise, isn't she?
I, I don't know, Judge.
Okay. Was on a cruise, I don't know, might be in quarantine, not sure. Anyway, Kat Lee was here with our previous county clerk, David Paskett, and the two of them pretty much ran the redistricting process after the, after the 2010 census numbers came out. And I asked her opinion and she's, her opinion was, oh my gosh, please don't give that back to us, get some outside help. I sent the proposed contract over to our county attorney, Mr. Foltz, and he asked a very valid question. Well, I see this proposal, who and what, who else is doing this and, you know, what are their charges? And he did check with another firm and he got a response from them. Mr. Foltz, do you care to?
I emailed that to everybody, so I assume everybody has a copy of that. I, I don't, again, I don't have that in front of me today. My recollection is the primary difference between the two law firms is one will do it for a fixed cost of 20,000 and then the other one says, pay me an initial fee, I think it's five, and then we'll figure out where we're going from there and whether you need a Cadillac or whether you can get by with a Yugo. And so that's what David Menendez, I think it's Menendez, told me on the phone, he's the guy that I talked to from Bickerstaff. And my recollection is that Bickerstaff may have been the firm that helped in the 2000 census, not the 2010. So I don't know if there's any value, knowing that they've worked with the county before, but as I've indicated in the last meeting, we had, they were the ones that helped us through the 258 map. So the county has had contracts with them and used them in the past. We also had a contract with Allison's firm to work on subdivision regulations. At some point, we deviated from what, what it was that they were recommending and we went with the pattern of what Washington County had, but we, the county has used both firms in the past. My understanding is they're both, they, they have knowledgeable people that are familiar with what issues may come up and either one would be a good firm to go with.
Judge, the difference is that I saw the initial, the initial fee, like you said, Allison and Bass, it's a flat fixed fee, whereas Bickerstaff is a little bit different. They, they bill the initial fee of 4,500 upfront.
Right, which is 500 cheaper than what Bass...
But then they bill about the hour.
Right.
Okay. And many times in, they, they reference in their contract, if requested, and some of the items that they talked about, if requested, were items that were covered in your flat fee for Allison Bass. The if requested things that were important to me were if you're going to look at, looking at, over, overseeing the commissioners, precinct lines and, and to make sure that they stay in compliance with the one person, one vote balance, then you may need to look at the jurisdictions of the JP and the constable, although they don't fall under that same restriction as one person, one vote. If you're changing lines, it could also change the election lines for those particular precincts also. That cost is covered and taken in consideration under this flat fee from Allison Bass, whereas Bickerstaff says if requested. And they're told costs that they estimate is 29,500, whereas the flat fee cost for Allison Bass is 20,000. It also covers travel and hotel expenses and copying. All of these things are not laid out in Bickerstaff. Those are extra fees. So that, that you have so many potential redistricting plans that comes with the flat fee, whereas they will offer you so many plans over here, not, they didn't state how many plans you would get, but upon request, then you would have to pay per plan and also pay per hour for the attorneys, for the senior GIS, GIS paralegal, and the partner.
Right.
So...
I don't mean to cut your conversation short, but I'm prepared to make the motion on Number 11, that we do hire a legal firm and the legal firm that we hired to help us with the upcoming redistricting process is Allison Bass and McGee. I second the motion.
All right.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by County Judge Joe Faust, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. And that is to have legal assistance, hire a legal assistance for the upcoming redistricting. And that would be Allison Bass and McGee. So is there any further discussion on that motion?
One other thing.
Sure.
Once the contract goes back, we are required to send the initial fee upfront along with the contract. So I'm just checking.
We have $5,000 budgeted for attorney fees. So what are you going to come up with the other 15?
Well, it goes, the, the other is in additional years.
Oh, okay.
One is not till October 31st, 2021, October 31st, 2022.
I have the same contract.
Okay.
But excellent question, but we've got it covered.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Foltz, could I impose on you to do what you need to do with Allison Bass, letting them know that we're going to use their firm?
I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you very much. And if you want to contact Bickerstaff, tell them thank you. We've done with their competitor.
Maybe, maybe not.
Okay. Let, let them find out that they didn't get the business. But I appreciate your researching that for us. We make a more intelligent decision. Agenda Item Number 12, discuss and take action to approve funding for the maintenance and storage facility associated with the new Business and Justice Center. I asked to have this on the agenda because we have our contractor here, we have the equipment here, they're already mobilized, and Al Peeler and myself have been talking along with the building committee and everybody else from almost the beginning, when we build this facility, the new Justice Center, which is about 32,000 square feet, we know that that did not include room for maintenance and if we needed additional storage, we could add on to the maintenance facility some storage rooms. And correct me when I, where I'm wrong, Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Cox, as part of the building committee and also Mr. Peeler, but we had had discussions, in my opinion, all along about this offset maintenance building. And one of my thoughts was that when we're doing foundation work and parking lot work and we're pouring concrete, that we make sure that we have that facility, the foundation for that facility put in. In some conversation with Mr. Peeler, after the fact, what PGAL was stating was, oh, well, we were just talking about a dirt pad and I guess there was some denial that they had been of the opinion, we were of the opinion, it was going to be affirmed and finished structure, not done by them, not drawn up by them, but it was in the foundation plans. Well, I wasn't at the meeting, the, the meeting that you folks had where PGAL denied making that comment or had, understanding that, or there was a lack of clarity. So the reason I have this item back on the agenda, I think it's important for us as we're in this building project to make sure that we know what the foundation needs are going to be of this facility so that we can get the peers and all of that done. And I, I would suggest at a lesser price than bringing everybody back in six months or 10 months or 12 months after the facility's done and then we continue on with the rest of that building process. So, you know, I'm not exactly sure what we need to do or, you know, but I, I feel like we need to move forward on this fairly quickly, again, before they start pouring parking lot concrete and so forth, because I don't want them out there jackhammering new concrete because, oh, we need to do something different on the foundation. I also know there've been some follow-up emails from some of the department heads and/or elected officials about the storage space that we, Al and I had talked about for this facility, which is confusing to me because I thought when everybody was involved in the needs analysis and set the floor plans out, that needed storage was built into the building. So when we, when Al and I were talking about, what was it, 20 by 80?
It was 40 by 80.
Forty, 40 by...
At first was 40 by 60.
Forty by 60, and we'd go, that's, well, no, this is planned ahead, we need more storage. And the next thing I know, this thing's grown to a 40 by 100 because of some of the, well, the county clerk saying, hey, I need more storage. Well, I'm confused by that because the county clerk was in the needs analysis meetings and there was storage allocated in the new 32,000 footprint. So in my mind, this was thinking ahead for the future, not for the current needs and, and we've already taken this from 60 foot to 80 foot to 100 foot. You know, it's like Noah didn't know how many animals he had and he had to make the ark a little bit bigger.
So...
And I don't know if I've made myself clear, but this, we need to make some decisions as a court on additional expenditures if it was not in the initial contract to have a solid foundation put in by PGAL and Collier. That's where I'm at.
I'm of the opinion that, yes, we, we need a facility, obviously, we need a maintenance facility to take care of that building as well as every other building that's going to be under the charge of the maintenance department. And I'm a little bit at odds too. One of the concerns that I have is that we've invested a ton of money over a significant amount of time trying to get the county into the digital era and we, which in my mind probably wouldn't dictate that we need this much storage room.
Thank you.
And I don't want to throw good money at the bad, so to speak, but if we keep hoarding everything that we hoard, and I'm not saying everything's bad, but there are a lot of things that, that we probably can minimize on based on technology, you're, you're looking at a probably a little bit smaller maintenance facility as well as a maintenance facility that's geared toward future growth to accommodate some of those needs. You're exactly right. I mean, some of these conversations were had during the building meetings and a lot of these issues were addressed during the building meetings and here we are now talking about a, what is, what is it, 80 by 100?
Forty by 100.
4,000 square foot building out behind just a house, what? Besides the maintenance department.
Ms. Nichols?
I'll just make this comment, like for the storage area in my office, it's not a, a large storage area and we have to keep a minimum of seven years' records. Well, I can't keep seven years' records even in this office.
Are you required by law to keep hard copy or can you keep digital copy?
I would have to verify that.
Some of the records, depending on what type of document, it requires us to keep original documents, like hard copies, but a lot of it can be scanned.
But don't you keep your records now across the street in a shared space with another department? So I mean, that, on this plan, in that 10 by 18 or whatever it is?
10 by 18.
Specifically for you, and I think now it's probably, what, a 5 by 10 space?
No, it's, it's a, it's probably 10 by 18.
But you share that with some, another department?
Yes, because they have, they have...
Auditor's treasure.
They have the judge's office, well, they did have until adult, we moved the judge's stuff over there.
I don't keep that stuff because the county attorney thinks I need to.
Oh, okay. Treasures and auditors share one. I believe there's somebody else in there, but I'm, no, is that treasurer? Okay, so it was the treasurer's, auditors. At one time, it was the treasurer's, auditors, and the judge. Then we moved the judge over here.
And I found, we did find some JP stuff in there, but...
But we took that out.
Yeah.
And I dealt with that correctly, yes.
I mean, it's just, we, we're scanning everything, you're getting every...
Vanessa is one that had emailed, so I mean...
Well, let me just say this, even though we are digitizing a lot of our records, those books are permanent records and they cannot be destroyed or gotten rid of. I have to keep those books because they're historical and that's required in the law. But I cannot get rid of those books, even if they're digitized.
But how many, how many more books are we going to add to that?
Uh, we're not making any new books. These are just all old books. Everything now is all digital. So we're not making any new books, but the ones that we have, we have to keep.
But you'd expressed a concern that, you know, the 10 by 18 wasn't going to be enough space to store what you currently have.
Correct.
And then when, I guess the question came up, it was, what, what was the next size up?
Uh, it's roughly 20 by 18.
So almost double. And there was some concern, I guess, expressed on your part, that, is that going to be enough?
I would think if that was doubled, that might be enough, because if we get high-density shelving in there, we can condense a lot of those books into their shelves.
But under the, the scanning process and the digitization of all these records, I, I distinctly remember, and I can't quote you the agency, but there is an agency out there that will come pick up those books once they've been digitized, carry them to Austin, and maintain those records.
The Texas State Archives will... The Texas State Archives will, will keep some of these books. But I have, I have some apprehension about letting them leave the county, because this is our county history. And I'm afraid if the books are gone, then they're gone.
And I certainly appreciate the fact of having some historical relics.
Right, but not every book over there is going to be scanned. I mean, some books are just like court records, you know, from the eighteen hundreds. Some of them are sheriff's records, some of them are, you know, some of these books probably won't ever get scanned. The only things that I'm working on that are to get scanned are the probate records, because that's what we get most requests for. And then the next, after that, will be our court case files, which have never been scanned. But they're not in books, they're in folders. But a lot of these books, you know, like chattel mortgages, you know, nobody really uses those, but we can't get rid of them because they're historic, they're old.
Does that mean they're significant?
They're significant in the fact that they're old. Anything that was produced prior to nineteen fifty is protected and must be preserved. So anything after nineteen fifty, if it's scanned, and it depends on what type of record it is as well. Some records are permanent, some records just have a, you know, lifespan of like two to five years. You know, it's different for each type of record. But ninety percent of my records are permanent records.
But the qualifier on that is the requirement for hard copy records from this day forward is far less than what you currently experience.
Right, and so just the fact that I can have a place to keep them, that we may not be access them if they're on, you know, the computer, but we still have to maintain them and protect them.
But we have, there's an agency, right, that does that, in Austin?
Well, it's Texas State Archives.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, so the records are not being destroyed, and we're going to-
Right, right. So what my thought was, was that they will come out here and do an assessment, if I ask them to, of our records, and come up with, you know, a solution or a plan, so to speak. So that's kind of what my thinking is. I've also been trying to cut down on what we're going to be bringing over, like, I'm getting everything out of the shut drawers so that they could be put in files, so that'll reduce space as well. But there's a lot of books over there, there's quite a lot of books.
Yeah, I mean, I think going forward, that's probably the direction that, at least in my mind, we need to be going, because we, it's very expensive. I mean, we're paying a lot of money to have these records documented and scanned.
Right.
We're paying a lot of money, apparently proposing at least, to pay a lot of money to store them. And I certainly appreciate history and don't want to neglect, do course on that, but there's places that our records could go that would be preserved and accessible.
I want to look into that, but I, you know, for now, for now, I just need to know that my, there's a place for them to go.
Well, I mean, I don't know how we determine that until there's an investigation on what you actually have to keep.
Right.
And keep appearing grounds county, if you're going to keep it here in grounds county, what, I mean.
Well, and then the other issue is, and this is what I was asking, is am I going to need to purchase shelving? Are y'all going to provide shelving? Can we use existing shelving? These are things that I kind of, you know, I'm thinking about, thinking forward and ahead, once we do get this storage building.
All right, so let's take a ride through the building real quick, okay? So where I'm at is this has been sent off to the pre-engineering, engineered building, because you can get a lot less, a lot more for less square footage than if we would just have a builder come out and build it. The problem is, I need to know where we're going with it before I can submit it to the utility design engineer and the pier and pad engineer. So we'll take a kind of a ride through the building. The two end, the two end, the twenty foot by seventeen foot by six is the two buildings that, or the two rooms that I would say that district clerk and county clerk could go in. We'd have to hire, and this is all the stuff that, when we started this, is hidden costs that I talked about, quite honestly. And they, oftenly, is that a word? Often. So these high-density files that district clerk has in their office can fit minus two and a half to give them room, will fit in that room with the nine inch, or nine foot spacer on the side. You have a set down at David Lilly's office that, who knows? It's not an argument I want to get in today of whose they really are. They were somebody's, then somebody said they were Diane's, and Diane says they are hers, because they gave them. So that could, that set of high-density files could be moved and put in that.
We're talking one twenty by seventeen for district clerk and one for county clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
So you got numbers in the rooms, right, on this sheet?
Sir?
You've got numbers in the rooms on this sheet?
Yes, sir.
So are you saying district clerk would go in eight, and county clerk would go in nine, or vice versa?
Yes, that's my suggestion.
All right, moving on.
Number two, not knowing the stuff that the district attorney holds, but they have a file room also with high-density files.
Where wasn't theirs, all designed in their office?
Correct. But as we're finding out, that everybody needs more room now.
Okay, so you're going to put the DA in number two.
Correct.
Next.
But I don't know how much high-density files we can fit in, because-
For now, that's all they get.
For now, that's all they get.
Okay.
Then you have treasures in, and this doesn't have to stay like this, but.
No, but this will get us down the road.
Yeah, treasures is in one, auditors is in three, is in.
We got you.
JP, two is in five. Tax assessors is in seven. Six, we'll go back to two, four. Four would be district attorney. Who am I missing?
HR?
Eight, no. JP.
I T.
Hot?
I T.
No. So it's JP, I have nine office, you'll have one ten by eighteen open. You have tax assessor, district clerk, county clerk.
JP two, auditor, treasurer.
Auditors, treasures, JP.
County court at law.
No.
Constable.
I think it's V A L.
And V A.
And the DA.
You got the DA in number two.
Yeah.
Right, so you got county clerk.
So you got four and five, four and six open?
There's one, there's one I'm forgetting.
HR, didn't get one?
I don't believe they were in it, but maybe they were. I, I draw this four times, so.
Okay, voters, or they still want to?
Voters are still, so voters will be in this building after, I get to drawing that building.
Well, what is the shop?
Huh?
What is the shop?
That's the maintenance area.
Yeah.
For all of his janitorial and equipment and stuff.
No, I can't, I gotta move all that building over there. I'm just looking forward to where you want me to deal with it. I'm.
Okay, I'm trying to, I understand you're trying to get the square footage as to what you're looking at and what you need to bid out and get a pricing on. But I also thought I heard you asking a question about, in the contract, do we have a dirt pad, or do we have a concrete pad?
You don't have a concrete pad, you got a dirt pad, which doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Well, originally, it was, we were trying to build it all. When we got initial, initial estimates, we were like, I mean, we changed the building five times, so that was dropped off. PGAL knew that we were needing, wanting to at least put one in the future, so the layout, he at least put it in a spot where would most acts be accessible.
I, either dirt pad.
Yeah, so, or at least just to draw out of where it was going to go, so the parking lot, everything would be right. I mean, we had talked about possibly putting it back in, at least the maintenance part, and then, you know, just, you know, as many times we changed it, there was just a loss of, loss of communication there is what happened.
Yeah, because at first, this building was a twenty-four by twenty-four. It was just the maintenance.
So is that what's in the bid, is it twenty-four by twenty-four?
No, there's nothing in the bid.
There is nothing in the-
You said there's a dirt pad in the bid.
That's it.
Okay, but what size is the dirt pad?
No, there's, it's just a space that was stuck in there, it's not even a pad.
It's not even a pad?
Nothing.
They're going to-
It was a space for it, right?
Yeah, but they're going to square it up.
It was supposed to be elevation.
They're going to elevate it, they're going to compact it, but they haven't put a number on it, because we haven't put a number on it.
Well, that, yes, we have, I mean, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I have always had that as the, in the back of our mind, as the budget.
But it's not in the contract, it's not in Collier's contract.
That's right, but we all, but we had that figure because we knew we were going to be building this.
Right, that two hundred and fifty thousand, though, was just with the mindset that we had already utilities there, we had a concrete pad sitting down on it. That's not going, two, I'm going to try to get into that two fifty, but I'm not giving you a straight-up number of two fifty is what it's going to be. Because with building a pad and having to hire an engineer and all that, to get the pad and the utilities designed, I'm going to try.
Again, the reason I've got this on the agenda, we know we're going to have to have something over there. We know we're going to have to put a foundation in, we know we're going to have to drill some piers for that. I would like us, as a court, to dedicate some amount of money, not necessarily worst-case scenario or best-case scenario, but dedicate some amount of money so that we can go ahead and get the plans drawn. And once we get the plans drawn, we get the foundation, we get the piers drilled and the foundation poured, so that we know where the utilities. We, the shop is going to be what's closest to the new building, okay? So if this is the new building, it's going to lay like this. If we decide we only need one, two, three, four storages, then it's going to be cheaper than what this is. Or if we need five and six, or if we don't need these last two extensions taking us out to a hundred foot, leaving it at the eighty, or bringing it back to the sixty, we know we're going to at least probably have a cost of taking it out to about sixty foot. Is that right, Al?
That's correct.
So my idea is, we need to have some amount of money allocated so Al can get the printing, the prints drawn up, and then we can let Collier bid it, or whoever's going to bid it to do it, so we can get it done while the equipment is here. Because I think we can get it done for, I don't know, I'm just going to shoot from the hip, but twenty to twenty-five percent cheaper than having to bring somebody back out a year from now, or two years from now, to build that building.
I need a definition of get done. Are you talking just the foundation, or are you talking about an entire building?
For the moment, I'm talking about get done the foundation. We can then, if we had to, we could allocate funds in next year's budget, which would be about the right timing for us to, I don't know if it's going to be metal, or if it's going to be cinder block, or what it's going to be, but then to build the walls, the roof, and make it functional.
And I could do it, sorry, my, yep, go ahead, your permission. I'll step out quick.
We have money, I mean, we have the two hundred and fifty, I mean, that's built into our original budget. I mean, I don't think, coming up with the money, we just need to determine how big a building.
Right now, we have one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and thirty dollars in our twelve million dollar budget that is not allocated.
That's after, that's, that's in consideration with that.
That's what?
That's what we have left in, with, considering.
With the two fifty.
The two fifty.
The two fifty's still in there.
Yes, but at the, at the bottom line, we still, even after we budgeted two fifty for the maintenance building and two ninety-five for the access road, we still have that figure on the bottom remaining.
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean, we have money.
We got two hundred and fifty thousand in there that would go towards the foundation and the work.
That will be that easy.
Sir?
Just for a foundation that you covered your costs.
Yeah, okay.
And that could be a change order, too, Judge.
Then if I premature an issue for this, why didn't you tell me that?
I didn't mean it like that, that's what I took it.
No.
But two fifty will cover, no, no, two fifty will cover the foundation easily.
Okay, but you still need to get drawings, so we can give it to somebody to get the foundation done, right?
Yes.
And my concern is that if we don't come to some kind of conclusion relatively soon, we're going to be long, or we're going to be short on what we need.
I agree.
But I don't want to wait four months to figure out how much the county clerk, how much the district clerk, how much the ADA's, or the DA's going to need for storage. We're smarter than that, we ought to be able to figure that out pretty quick.
Just tell me how, just tell me what building size you want, and that will allow me to go on with the structural.
Well.
Well.
And that's where we're at.
My comment to you was, worst-case scenario, we know it's, we know it's going to be forty-five, send that to your people.
I did.
Get them to draw it up, and if we figure out we can cut twenty foot off the end of it, that's going to be cheaper. Because on that end, on that end of the building, alls we're doing is cutting off ventilation duct and a little bit of electrical wire and lights and things like that.
You're correct.
So that would be the worst-case scenario, that's what I want to-
This is worst-case scenario, but for foundation-wise, do I go a hundred? Do I go eighty? Do I go sixty?
He just said a hundred.
Go a hundred?
Yeah.
And then we'll have that twenty-plus peered out and all that? Is that what we're doing, pre-planning?
I don't know if that's a smart thing to do, or if that's a waste of money. If it's a waste of money, we shouldn't do it. It's a smart thing to do, because just like on the east side of the new building, we have grass space that if we ever needed to expand the new facility, we have the area to do that. If we ever needed to expand this area, and it's a smart thing to do, to put the foundation and the peering in there, then we're being proactive.
Okay.
I still have concerns, because we said that it's in there, but when you say it's in there, you're saying in the twelve million.
Two hundred and fifty thousand is in there.
That, that we, we've talked about in the budget. You're saying the two fifty has been figured into the twelve million, but these things are not in the Collier contract.
Right, and it never, it was never intended to be in the Collier contract.
Okay, so, I guess my concern would be if we do all the things we, we talked about doing, and thank you, Ms. Mary, for the layout here, you're talking about the contingency would then go away. Because if you're then taking, are you taking the contingency amount to try to do this two fifty? If it's not already in the Collier contract, then you're, then the access road, then the additional soil testing, those things came up to five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Okay, we initially had a contingency budget of two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty, I mean, two hundred and ninety-two, thirty dollars. Then we're left at a minus in a contingency. If we're using money that we-
Well, we won't be using money out of the contingency, we'll be using money out of the budget, out of the twelve million dollar budget that we've traditionally set aside, not the Collier, Collier contractors has the contingency in it.
Okay, but-
You're gonna do these adjustments by making change orders with Collier, so don't you typically take the change orders from the owner's contingency fee if it's a change based off the owner's request?
He just said a while ago it would be a change order.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it comes out of the contingency. We, we, I mean.
But it's coming all, out of the overall budget, so.
The contingency is essentially a buffer in the budget for anything that comes up.
And that's what I wanna speak to, the buffer.
So either, either way, we, we've got a 1.26 million dollar buffer.
Buffer now.
Right now, we've got a 1.2 million dollar buffer, right now. Yep.
Okay, but that, what you said, didn't take the owner's contingency, and if you look at your paper, it does take it in.
Well, it'd be pay, it's paperwork, it's, it's, you know, we have.
It's still money.
We have 1.2 million dollar contingency, so.
It's paper.
I mean, whether we use it as contingency or out of the budget, we're still, I mean.
I, I'm still getting to my point of, are we allowing ourselves, after just being in construction, wait a month, month and a half, and are we allowing ourselves, are we cutting that, that money down to a point of we're gonna be tight, tight if something else rises up unforeseen? Okay, we started out, the first thing we did, the testing was off, so we had to spend money for that. We went back, we pulled out of landscaping and irrigation and moved that over there, so that the contingency could, you know, build up or stay where it needed to be. So, my, my, my point is, we're trying to build this building out of the funds we already have available. At what point do we get so close to where we can't finish a building, 'cause we've cut into funds, so many other funds that we had available, should something arise?
Well, I, I mean, I don't think we're.
It's 1.2.
As the county attorney often likes to reference, we live in a world of risk. We planned on building this building, and we've also incorporated the construction of the new maintenance building, and we've taken into consideration another access point. I mean, anything could happen, even if we don't do those things, that could, could cause us a lot of heartburn.
I guess what I'm saying is, even now, we're talking about, we're finding that we only had a dirt pad. So what are the other things we find we only have?
We don't know till we find them.
But, I mean, it could happen, though.
Well, it could, yeah.
It could, it could happen, and that, I'm just throwing that out there, that 1.2 in the scope of the type of building we're trying to build, that we don't run into these many things we find over time, because then we're gonna be left trying to find some financing to finish the building. Whereas when we talked about in the game plan from the beginning, when we had the workshop, as to how we were gonna lay out this storage building, was referenced coming along with the renovation, maybe in another financing kind of arena, not taking it out of the budget we currently have. That's why it was only a pad put in there and, and considered. So now we're moving into piers, into slabs, into plumbing, has to go into the foundation.
Utility design.
That's utility design, all of that's got to go in there, your design firms gotta go in there. You're, you're gonna get it designed right, that's what you're saying, you're doing a...
So, yeah, my utility design and my, um, structural pad design will all be in one, and then we'll send this off to a pre-engineer building, and they'll draw the drawings for free.
And then the, the drawings are free, okay. It just concerns me, I don't wanna play this really running things tight to finish a building, 'cause you haven't, I got, we got a list in the beginning of furniture, moving costs, turnkey costs, that we haven't even dealt with, that's supposed to come out of this 12. So don't forget about those things that are still sitting over there, furnishing.
Well, isn't there $500,000 in the contract for furnishings?
I don't believe it's for the.
No, it's for.
Office.
No, but I mean, for the most part, we're talking to people taking.
But it's for the courtrooms and that sort of thing, so.
Correct, and I did get clarification on the IT-related expenses that still will have to come out of that $100,000.
300 and something thousand.
There's partial hardwiring that is built into the current contract, but as far as your IT-related hardware and your telephone system is not included in the original contract.
And I think Greg sent us something, it's 300 and.
Greg wasn't there, but Andrew kinda confirmed that with me.
367,000, somewhere like that is what IT was at.
Yeah, close to 400,000 for the phone system.
Well, like I said, we've got 250,000 in there, put in the slab, design, everything, I mean, I don't see that going over 100,000, so we're, I mean, we're at, we're talking about adding 100,000 to what we were planning on spending anyway, out of this, so instead of 1.2, it'd be 1.1 million still in there.
Well, maybe after we decide a size, then maybe we need to have a conversation before, or prior to even looking at another concrete, to make sure that we're looking at everything, because we don't wanna forget things such as IT's, furnishing, moving expenses, all of this stuff to have a turnkey building.
Yeah, like I said, we're furnishing, I mean, for the most part, we put the furniture in there.
I don't know where we are on the roadway.
Has their desk and stuff, I mean.
This is, this is all, all we're talking about is wise, whether it's.
Yeah.
Doing it while you're there wise, or whether it's staying on top of your numbers wise.
Absolutely. And like I said, we're, we're at, we're not adding, you know, a lot to, to this, if we didn't.
So you're saying, what I hear you saying, are you saying that it's gonna cost more than 250?
Yes.
It, it's gonna be close, I mean, depend, like if.
It's gonna be considerably more, maybe?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so, I think I'm gonna break, I, I'll bet I'm at, with everything, probably 300, 325.
Well, at the end of the day, we decide, if that's what it's gonna be, and we don't wanna spend the money, we don't spend the money. I still, I still think that we've got too much storage space in this building that probably could cut down some of it.
Yep, so you could always add on later, I mean, there are things that, we need to get in a building, a main building before we go.
Let me, let me see if I can slow this conversation down. The agenda item number 12, discuss and take action to approve funding for the maintenance and storage facility associated with the new business and justice center. Commissioner Malat, you said a moment ago that you feel like the foundation can be done for around 100,000. We have enough money already allocated in the budget, 'cause we have 250,000 in the budget that applies to this building. So I guess the thing to do is to continue with your movement of getting the drawing, getting us a price, so we can go ahead and give it to Collier or to someone, and let them figure out how much it's gonna cost to do the foundation, and then we go from that point forward. In the meantime, to resolve Commissioner Cox's concern, we can do a review of the storage space that we have allocated in the 32,000 square foot, we can talk to some of the other, uh, department heads or elected officials to say, hey, what's in the 32 is not enough for us, and we can maybe sharpen our pencil, and determine that we can cut the length of that building down, or we leave it as is.
So, just to be clear, make sure I'm hearing right, you're saying a foundation, well, you might be, but he's, I'm not hearing him clearly.
All right.
You saying a foundation, $100,000, did I hear you say that just then? 'Cause that's what he said.
Off the top of my head about what, I mean, it's been a while since I've been in it.
That's what he said, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing you guys correctly.
That's pretty close.
And, and here, that, this construction of new maintenance building at 250,000 is already in this 12 million dollar package.
So what was in there for Collier to do the dirt pad? Did we have a numbered amount, or that was nothing in there?
It was lumped in with the dirt work.
Yeah, it's lumped in with the dirt work, get it up, this is where we're gonna put it, get it up to grade.
So would they still be doing the dirt work?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna do the dirt work.
Okay, and then you're saying a foundation over here is $100,000.
That's close.
It's been a while since.
You say, you directed it to me, that's close.
Okay, all right.
And my, Collier thinks it's a little high, but.
Been a while since I've done that.
I'm gonna table my request until we have additional information.
Chris, could I make one comment, though, and it won't take long? If, if it's not a change order, a change order is permissible, as long as it doesn't exceed 25%, if it's not a change order, you're going back to RFPs or RFQs, you're starting over.
Right.
Because it's not included, if it's an expenditure of 50,000 for public work, you're gonna have to go through the whole process again, with the auditor finding the right person to do it, so it's either gonna be Collier, or it's not gonna be done for some period.
That's right, so that was correct, so in the beginning, that's what it was gonna be, was gonna be Collier doing it, is gonna consider it as a change order, just the foundation, because we didn't wanna spend, at that time, it was 405,000 dollars a square foot, or 405 dollars a square foot, for a maintenance shed.
Yeah, no way.
Not, not that I'm not worth that, but I could say, when we went down to the storage facility, I did my numbers on this building, and they run from 37 to 85. So, a square foot, so I told, and I still stick with this today, that if we do a change order, we get the utility design, and we get the structural pad, because in 13 years, when I leave out of here, we can just pour concrete in a six-inch pad and call it good, but in 13 years, when I'm gone, and the next maintenance manager comes in and goes, golly, and all your shelves are this, it's better to get a structural pad now, do a change order, and then, once we have this, then I can go to, we're not talking about a huge shop, we're talking about a storage facility, that I'm gonna be making into a maintenance shop. It's not gonna be like Harry's, Harry's got huge thick stuff, 'cause he's bringing big stuff in, I'm not. So, you get that down, then we can go out, and I can just pre-engineer building, put it up for bid, boom, there's 100 pre-engineer building manufacturer out there that would do that job for 37 to 85 dollars a square foot. That was the whole purpose of this thing. I think where we got trapped, or misconstrued, was we were, and Commissioner Cox, uh, said that in the meeting, we were under the impression that they were gonna build a pad for the utility design. It's not there, so we need to move on, tell me what size building, if this is the building you want, we'll go get it, I'll go get the pad, come back with a change order, boom, you guys decide yes or no, if not, we go out for a bid for the whole building, and then see what that comes. I, I mean, that's, that's the plain, plain sense of, that's how it was designed to roll out. I didn't mean to study that much.
I'm hearing you say that was how it's intended to roll out, that's not what it did.
That's not how it did, so now I have to, just tell me that you want me to go for a 40 by 100 pad, and if it comes back, I, I come back, I bring it to you, and it comes back too much, then we start chopping it off, and I start redrawing the pre-engineer building. I just need to know how much to tell the engineer design on the utility design, and on, on, um, the structural pad, how big, how, how wide, how long, that's all I need to know.
I, I have a question, Al.
I got it.
If, if we postpone the decision on this, will we lose the opportunity to save the money on drilling the piers?
Okay, so.
What is the timeline on that?
All right, so the piers, I, I did address that question, because the judge had asked me that.
Okay.
And I didn't know, because we're, I mean, they're at 140 piers out of 226, so we gotta be moving, was getting engineers, Chad knows this, getting engineers to move that quick isn't gonna happen.
Yeah.
You know, so I asked Todd, and I asked Clayton, Collier, if your machine goes away, he said, okay, Al, I, I hear what you're saying, you want me to drill piers for that, he said, not gonna happen. But, we have a contract with the pier driller, we can tell him to go away and come back, because we're not gonna worry about that little maintenance shed until we get this board, the new building. Makes sense to me, they have a contract, but for us to go out and go for bid, that's a whole new setup charge, mobilization charge, they already have that, they've already paid that. So we just fit in, you might not see them drilling piers after, I mean, during, after they get the justice center done, move right over to, they're not gonna do that, 'cause the maintenance shed is right down in the lay, layout area, but they have the contract already, if we need to bring you back, we'll bring you back at this rate, that's where we'll save money, 'cause I asked that question. Can't let, I, I mean.
I think you need to move forward on the 40 by 100, 'cause that's the worst-case scenario.
I, I do, too, and if there is no further discussion, I'll make the motion to do that.
Procedure, Mr. Paul, I already said to table it, now we're back at it.
Yeah, it wasn't a second, just let it down for a second, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
You're supposed to have a second on the table.
All right, I have a motion before the court on agenda item number 12, by Commissioner Dobieinsky, for Mr. Peeler to go get a bid on a 40 by 100, is there a second? I'll say the motion. I have a second, is there further discussion?
Judge, just a clarification for finance, are we keeping the 250 in there, or are we gonna do the 100,000?
I don't think we need to do anything until we get his number.
Okay, so just leave it as is right now?
That'd be my preference.
Okay.
Further discussion?
So we will have further discussion on this.
You bet.
Wonderful.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Agenda item number 13, thank you, Mr. Peeler.
Thank you.
Considering, take action regarding the burn ban and authorize county judge a signatory. I believe we leave it as is. Any updates on the strategic plan?
Very briefly, we have our first annual fundraiser for the animal shelter, it's gonna be at the fairgrounds on May the 17th, which is Sunday afternoon, Doug Stone is gonna be the performer, uh, and there, there will be further information coming out on that.
I just recommend the more, you can, information, get it on Facebook and publicize it.
We already have it on Facebook.
There is a social media for it, okay.
Who's the performer?
Doug Stone.
His, his biggest hit's, uh, Be Better Off in Pine Box.
That's appropriate, that's appropriate. That brings us to agenda item number 15, motion to adjourn, is there a motion?
I move adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion before the court on agenda item number 15, by Commissioner Dobieinsky, second by Commissioner Malat, any discussion? Harry, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Two motions.
Fair.